She's like so much, turn that on!
Okay.
We're ready?
This one's like a chicken or something.
Okay.
You're gonna show me something?
Can I do this for just a second? I'll bring it up to you. Thank you.
Alright, we ready? Attorney Reuben, are we ready?
Ready.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Forester, my fellow commissioners, Clerk Angela Torres, Assistant City Manager Tracy Alvarez, Attorney J. Reuben, I would like to welcome everyone here to today's meeting. Today is March, Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. Today is our regular city commission meeting. It is now 9:00 a.m. I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Speaker Whitehead?
Here.
Honorable Senator Forester?
Here.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Here.
Honorable Ramon Aragon?
Here.
Honorable Speaker Dwyer?
Here.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item number B2, Silent Meditation. At this time, I would ask that each of you join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation, remembering the victims of the tragic incidents that happened in Boulder, Colorado, a couple of days ago. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item B3, The Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Pro Tem, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item B4, The Approval of the Agenda. Commissioner Forester will make the motion.
Commissioner Baca will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner-
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. We have two items that were needed to remove from the agenda. The presenter will not be able to present them today. So that will be item I1 and item I3.
I1 and I3 to be removed. Commissioner Forester makes the motion as noted, removing I1 and I3 from the agenda.
Commissioner Baca will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forester and seconded by Commissioner Baca to approve the agenda with deletions of I1 and I3 as noted by City Clerk Torres. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Ramon Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Speaker Dwyer?
Aye.
Honorable Speaker Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Senator Forester?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item C, Public Comments. Please remember your three-minute rule. Those that are out in go-to meeting, if you would like to give public comment, please state your name and your address and remember our three-minute rule. I will cut you off at three minutes. Is there anyone out in the go-to meeting that would like to give public comment at this time?
I would like to give public comment. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you please let me know when the clock starts? I can't see it.
Yes, I'll go right ahead. It started.
My name is Susan Crowe. I live at 711 Cochrane. And I am addressing your offer of smart meters as well as the offer to pay $50 to keep our analog meters. Your offer of a smart meter as well as your offer to pay a $50 monthly fee are based on contract law. There must be a meeting of the minds in every contract offer. And while silence is considered tacit agreement, all contracts without full disclosure are null and void. This contract between tier C utility customers as well as the contract with Landis and Giraffe is null and void because you did not disclose to the community that these meters will explode and cause house fires when hit with power surges of 1, 5, or 10,000 volts. The man that Landis and Giraffe provide engineering test data on power surges and the lack of surge protectors in these meters. The delicate electronics within the meters that allow them to send wireless communications about our electrical usage make them vulnerable to power surges. You also neglected to disclose that there is 24-hour, 7-day collection and electronic failings of every utility customer in the city using a smart meter. Therefore, we, the people of this community, claim the right to have our original analog meters returned without fees of any kind. We will only, if conditionally, accept your offer of a $50 monthly fee as long as it is waived. Every month that the utility clerk receives a date-stamped photo email to the utility office showing electrical usage and that their policy changes so no one is sent out to read a meter when a dated photo record is provided by email. This is my conditional acceptance of your $50 fee offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Is there anyone else that would like to give public comment at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Ariel, would you unmute your mic, please?
Oh, I'll try. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you perfect. And the time is started.
Okay. So, please, commissioners, I respectfully and politely ask you to withdraw and cease any further actions on the RFP post-electric car fueling station. There is no call for it and return comprehensive plan, origination for its development, or obscured in hundreds of message files, date emails back and forth from staff and with a regular electric department outside the consulting house. It has not been discussed at any advisory board meeting. There is no need assessment, no projected budget, most significantly, no input from the public on it whatsoever. Yet, in the end, we will be left to pay for it. A dilemma about this stems in this process, however, is in the city's exceedingly unfriendly renewable ordinance 664 that is both regressive and punitive. I have complained about the unfairness of your ordinance tamper of the year and worked to revise it. Currently allowed for homeowner's future expanded electric use, such as with an electric car through one's own solar production. Why should we citizens be forced to pay for an electric car fueling station or city hall when your own failed renewable ordinance does not accommodate homeowner electricity growth for an electric car? Please answer immediately. George Sagetti, now Chair of the Public Utility Advisory Board, tried and failed a week ago on my day to make changes in 664. On the all-male board, the former city staff members on a hardly a citizen's board and certainly not representative, the discussion was depressing. Despite citizens speaking for positive changes to 664 and no citizens speaking to keep the ordinance as is, three of the board members remain retaliating to stick to the 90%. If the city continues to cut off its nose despite its fate, Mr. Sagetti is correct. No one would want to move to it. The runaway spending of the electric department is alarming. Now the city is asking for a major grant to upgrade the long-dilapidating transformers. The million dollars plus spent on smart metering should have addressed this instead. How many blowouts like this of Purdon Solar Inverter occurred during smart meter processing? A cost one of the more expensive parts of solar installation that Purdon Solar Company is now rightfully demanding of the city. Speaking of costs, now Landis and Giraffe's so-called charge of $50 and I support what St. Crowe just said. It's now on my bill. No public input there. Ironies of irony in my own photographed meter readings are the guide to the kilowatt numbers on my bill.
Ariel, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't get to finish. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in go-to meeting that would like to give public comment at this time?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Rick Dumiac.
Good morning, Mr. Dumiac. Hold on just a sec.
Good morning, Mr. Dumiac.
Go ahead.
I'm Rick Dumiac, 701 Charles Street. You know, this $50 fee for getting back my analog meter is just, I feel like something penalized for my health concerns. $50 a month is outrageous for somebody on a fixed income. It's just totally unfair. That $50 is preventing my electrical usage on some parts. And yet, you're asking me to pay $50 so I feel secure in my home for my health concerns. Please revisit this. This is insane, $50 a month for a chip charge in a city of our size. And get it to the county, the county gets one figure, that's for them to raise their base budget? But come on. Do you receive $50 a month? You're forcing this all over the country. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a caller two and a caller three that are unmuted. At this time, do you wish to give public comment? Ariel, could you mute your mic, please? Thank you. I do not see anyone else out in go-to meeting to give public comment at this time. So, is there anyone else? Is there anyone else?
Hold on a second. Yeah, this is Ron Van.
Good morning, Ron.
Ron Van, 316 North Post. My utility credit account has been robbed by the city this month of $50. I have no way of stopping it. This is based on Madam Mayor's signature on a ludicrous, unjustifiable order from-
Ron, just a second, please. Mr. Hoag, could I get you to mute your mic, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Ron.
Okay. What I'm saying is that under the terms of the notice of liability that I served you personally with last year, you are going to be responsible for the $50 charge plus administrative costs and possible legal fees. I just want to let you know that this will be forthcoming very soon. This is outrageous. I have provided correct meter readings for the last two months that have corrected errant utility bills. There is no need whatsoever for a smart meter on my home in violation of my book amendment right to be secured in my home from surveillance by the city or anybody else. I am not going to accept your $50 charge, although you steal it from my account. And when it comes finished, you will be ending up in court. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Is there anyone else that would like to give public comment at this time?
Sandy?
Lorena, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you great. Thank you.
Okay. In regards to, there was a mention of an electric car charging station. We have had at least two people in the last couple of years in the visitor center who have wanted to know where they could get their cars charged. They were driving electric cars. They were visitors from out of town. They wanted to know where they could get their cars charged. The only place that we knew of was up at Holiday Inn Express to send them up there. If the city had something by city hall and had a meter on it, they could collect the revenue. People insert their credit cards to pay for it just like you could gas. And if we're wanting to promote tourism, we need to have the amenities available for people who want to travel here who are into the new electric cars. That's it.
Thank you, Lorena. Is there anyone else in go-to meeting that would like to give public comment at this time?
Madam Mayor, can I say one more thing?
No, sir. You only have one time, one, three minutes. If you have anything, you can email it to us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. I do not see anyone else in the go-to meeting to give public comment at this time. So, my next item on the agenda is response to public comment. At this time, does anyone have any response to public comment? Commissioner Aragon?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the solar situation, that was at the last PUAB meeting and I talked to Chairman George Sagetti. It took up almost the whole meeting. They were going to move on to the meter fee, possibly reducing it, which I think is going to happen. So those that are concerned about the meter fee, I feel like it's going to happen. It's going to be reduced quite a bit. And as far as Ms. Miller's comment, she wants to see me after the meeting. I don't know what. But I do think that's a good idea, to have a recharging station. And I don't know where we're at on that. I'm sure there's some thoughts on that. So with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Aragon. Is there anyone else that would like to give response to public comment at this time? Anyone? Hearing none. We thank everyone for their public comments. Please remember that they're all important to us and we will take everything that is said into consideration. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item E, Presentation. Certificate of Appreciation to Denise Addy for organizing the Toys for Kids event that took place on December 19th, 2020. I am proud and pleased to give her this certificate of appreciation. Denise not only helps the community with the Toys for Tots, but anytime something is needed, the first person that volunteers to be on top of things is Ms. Denise Addy. And she may not realize how much she has appreciated, but she is greatly, greatly appreciated on our community and greatly appreciated for what she does for our community. And you know, she doesn't ask for a dime for this. In fact, I'm just personally going to say today, this is something she didn't even want. You know, she's not one of these front and center-
But she deserves it.
She's not one of these front and center people. But I'm going to read this appreciation and I would like to ask Ms. Denise to stand up. Come up to the podium, please. Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Denise Addy. We would like to express our sincerest appreciation for conducting the spectacular Toys for Kids Christmas event for our children in Sierra County on December 19th, 2020. Your leadership and enthusiasm garnered the support of a vast team of community volunteers and phenomenally- phenomenal, whatever that word is, contribute to assisted in delivering this great effort. We want to command you and make sure you know your actions do not go unnoticed. Dated this 24th day of March, 2021, signed by myself as the mayor and Angela Torres. And what is this word?
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. I mean, you've given your time and money. I know I'm-
Pillars profit.
Yes, thank you. Yay! Good job, everybody! Well deserved.
Can you get us all in here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
Don't worry, I got you.
We always have too much fun. Thank you, Ms. Denise. We do appreciate you greatly.
Thank you. Just to give you a heads up, all of you spending your job, we're going to do water every Saturday in April for firefighters through the Department of State, the state police.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate that. And they do too. The next item on our agenda this morning is item F, Consent Calendar. The consent calendar consists of F1, City Commission Regular Minutes of March 10th, 2021; F2, City Commission Special Executive Minutes of March 15th, 2021; F3, Acknowledged Regular Public Utility Advisory Board Minutes, January 19th, 2021; and F4, Acknowledged Regular Recreation Advisory Board Minutes of February 1st, 2021. That's all that I have on the consent calendar this morning.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Luna will make a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Commissioner Forester will second. I have a motion made by Commissioner Luna and seconded by Commissioner Forester to approve the consent calendar as noted. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Senator Forester?
Aye.
Honorable Speaker Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Speaker Dwyer?
Aye.
Honorable Ramon Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item G, Public Hearings. G1, Public Hearing Discussion Action. Approve to Submit USDA Funding Applications for Municipal Water System Improvements and Authorization and Approval for City Manager and/or Mayor to Execute, Sign, and Submit the Required and Requested Documents Related to the USDA/RUFS Applications for Federal Assistance. Ms. Tracy Alvarez, Assistant City Manager. Acting City Manager.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, the PER that we've worked with, a portion of the PER that we've worked with, Wilson &amp; Company, we've identified a priority project for our municipal water system. USDA requires a public hearing for public input, official input and approval for this project. This project will replace approximately 4.9 miles of water line to include water meters and pressure release valves throughout the city. And with that, I stand, oh, their application request will be for $7,530,330. We do not know at this time what will be awarded as far as grant versus loan. But once we get that reward, it will come back to the commission for their review and approval. With that, I stand.
Thank you. I will go ahead and open this public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
I do have one question. So, in the description, it says that the manager, American, execute and he said he would bring it back to us. Explain that.
We have to execute the application. So this would be signatures on the application item.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
But it will come back and we'll know what our match is.
Correct one.
Correct, yeah. Attorney Reuben, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think it's an order.
Thank you.
We discussed this, yes.
Is there anyone out in the go-to meeting that would like to give comment on this public hearing? I do not see anyone. So, being that there's no more- Oh, go ahead, Ron. Go ahead, Ron.
Public hearings, again, are set up for the public to see. Public, they'll receive because nothing is ever lost to the people's attention to the point where they understand what is going on. You spent, last week, you spent a good portion of the evening with a water-related issue PowerPoint that was patting everybody on the back for their wonderful work in repairing broken water lines. But a statement was made by Mr. Jesse Cole in that regard that said that no one is to blame. And I disagree with that. Management of the city for the last 50 years has been negligent in providing for the replacement of our utilities. There are no plans, there are no long-range plans, and there is no execution of those long-range plans to address the fact that utilities, like everything else, die over time and must-
Ron, excuse me, point of order. This has nothing to do with discussion on this USDA funding application.
Well, tangentially, it certainly does because you're now asking us to borrow money because you don't know how much of a grant you're going to get. And once again, you're asking for somebody else to pay for your negligence. This is what the issue is in these grant applications. Let's let somebody else buy us new shoes because we-
Ron, excuse me, point of order. I think you've said enough regarding this. So, thank you.
Of course, you would think that.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Ron. Are there any more questions or comments? At this time, I will go ahead. Ariel, go ahead. Ms. Ariel, we cannot hear you. We can't see you neither now. Can you go ahead and call us in on your phone? I can't hear you. We can see you now.
She said, "I'll try to call." It worked a little ago.
We're waiting for one of the members from the public to get on.
I still can't hear her.
She said, "I can't hear it."
Thank you, Ms. Ariel. We cannot hear you at this time.
Nobody can hear you.
Sorry, we cannot hear you. Yeah, she's tried to call in and for some reason. Did you try to call in? Yeah, she did try to call in.
Maybe she can put it in the chat?
She should have to type it online.
She's trying one more time. Ariel, why don't you try to get off and then come back on go-to meeting? Like, get off and come back in?
Because her camera on the computer doesn't have audio so she has to play it. But she was on the phone earlier than when she talked.
I don't know.
No, she unmuted it off of her thing and then she talked. Technology. It's wonderful when it works. Who would have ever thought we'd been doing what we have done for the last year? It looks like her phone don't listen. Yeah, her call's not coming through either.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. You are on. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm going to try to, I have to get rid of my sound on the computer. Okay. But there were meters attached to this grant. Is that correct?
It would include-
Yes, ma'am. It would include meters.
Just along the stretch. Anytime we replace water lines within the USDA grant, we replace the meters.
Yes, ma'am. Anytime that water lines are replaced, meters will be replaced.
Okay. And those are analog meters?
I'll have to get you that information. I don't have it. I'll pick up on my head.
This is Mark Dancy with Wilson &amp; Company.
Yes, good morning, Mark. Thank you.
Good morning. Those meters, based on the utility, will be radio-read meters now. But they're still analog meters. But the city can read them as a general without having to walk in and open up every meter can
Thank you.
in the future.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ariel.
So, what's a radio, could you describe what a radio-read meter is?
They have a device that they go down the street and it will read the meter without having to open it up every meter can and read the numbers. And it electronically will go into their accounting system for going, which will reduce the cost of the- go into their accounting system for going, which will reduce the cost, ultimately reduce the cost of meter reading undertakings for the city.
Right, I mean, I think there's been a lot of problems with water meter readings as well, from my experience. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ariel.
Thank you.
I have a question about the, once the approval comes back, you mentioned.
Ms., excuse me, who is speaking?
This is Suzy Crowe.
Okay, Suzy Crowe, hold on just a second, I think Ariel Dartery was not finished yet with her. Ariel, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ariel, and thank you, Mark. Go ahead, Suzy.
When you mentioned that you would come back to find out what amount is the grant and what amount is loan, will we have the opportunity of a public comment at that time?
It won't come back as a public hearing, that will come to the commission for discussion action, but there's always public comment prior to, in the public comment section of the meeting.
Because we don't really know what we're getting before we get the data back, it would be nice to have a public, public hearing at the time that we have the data.
Right, well, this is a public hearing today to take into consideration what the public comment, what the public feels about this. This will come back to us for discussion action. This will be on the agenda at that time, and that will give you an opportunity to see what we will bring to the commission, and then you can come in with public comment, either in person, via go-to mail, or you can email us your questions and concerns. But there will not, there will not be an additional public hearing once this comes back for approval by the commission. Today is the only public hearing we will be having.
Thank you. Then, my only concerns are the meters that are going to be going in, that they specifically do not be smart or AMI technology meters, because the water is extremely damaging when it's radiated.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to give a public comment on this hearing? Seeing none, I will now close this public hearing and stand for a motion.
Commissioner Forrester will make the motion to approve, to approve and submit USDA funding application for our water system improvements.
Commissioner Luna will second.
If we could also approve the authorization for signatory authority?
Yes, ma'am. And I also will make a motion to approve the signature for the mayor and city manager authorization.
Second again, however. However, that word.
If you want to amend your motion or sneak to, I'll second both of them, whatever you want.
We'll just put the motion with the.
And that's the way I'll read it. So, I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and a second by Commissioner Luna for the approval to submit USDA funding application for municipal water system improvements and authorize an approval for the city manager and/or mayor to execute, sign and submit the required documents as noted to USDA and the RUS applications. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Senator Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Chairman Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Frances Luna?
Aye.
Honorable Rondo Aron? Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item H, Ordinances, Resolutions and Zoning. H1, Discussion Action, Resolution Number 362021, Budget Adjustment Request. Carol Propatrick, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I stand for any questions, this is a standard budget adjustment. When I first got here a year ago, we're still trying to work up a new chart of accounts, so we put money in one string where it should have been in another, so we're just moving part of this into the operational fund. We do have some new money for the electric utility, we're utilizing some of their reserves to pay for some maintenance and repairs on equipment, and I think the only other thing that we have is to budget contingency funds for the water department, wastewater treatment plant. So, I've tried to attach documents to help you see what we're doing, so I stand for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. Is there any questions from the commission regarding this budget adjustment request?
No, ma'am, I do have one comment, Madam Mayor. I was glad to see that the proceeds from the property sale went into the Miss Lane's other account, because we had discussed holding that money for those revenue improvements that side lock and sit in, so I was glad to see, I was glad to see it in the general fund and lost somewhere along the line, so thank you very much for that. Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion, we approve Resolution 362021 for the budget adjustment as suggested by our finance director.
Commissioner Baca will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Luna and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval of Resolution Number 3620/21, Budget Adjustment Request, as noted by our finance director, Carol Propatrick. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Rondo Aron?
Aye.
Honorable Frances Luna?
Aye.
Honorable Chairman Forrester?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item, is new, I, under New Business, we have I2, Discussion Action Matching Funds Request for USDA Grant for a Main Street E-Commerce Project. Linda Di Marino, Main Street. Are you on, Linda?
Yes, I'm on.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, prior to Mr. Madrid leaving, I had spoken with him about funding this, and he actually agreed to funding it, but had left without giving us anything saying that, so we bring this back to you. Main Street is applying for a USDA World Business Development Grant. COVID-19 was really hard for many of our businesses, because they really relied on foot traffic as the, you know, the main audience for their businesses. So, with the businesses being closed and no foot traffic, it became very apparent that they did not have the capacities and capabilities to engage in e-commerce. Now, we're coming out of the COVID restrictions and things are opening back up, so those audiences will be available again, however, you know, there really is no telling what's going to happen with any variants, number one, and number two, we don't know if people are all going to start running back and towards the making purchases after a year of buying things online. Now, we do have some businesses in Sierra County, this grant is, this grant project is, will be open to all businesses and prospective businesses in Sierra County. So, we don't know, you know, what things are going to look like in the near future. But also, in addition to having kind of the backup resource of e-commerce if something were to happen to shut the economy down again, also moving forward, it really opens up business in Sierra County to the rest of the world, and right now, we have very few businesses that are doing that. So, what this program is, is a series of educational sessions that would help our local businesses get online in various ways. There would be training about what payment platforms they should be looking at, possible platforms for selling their goods, business writing, and website development, and like store development if they were to want to create a store. Most of it also includes individual sessions, so one example is of somebody that would need this, if they went through the general webpage development session and then just needed more help, we don't want that to be a barrier for them, so we've set it up so that there could be individual sessions to help them get through any troubles that they would have. The entire project is over $20,000, and the Chamber of Commerce has also decided to partner on this, and they are going to contribute $500 towards that. Now, in order to get all the points for a USDA grant, we basically need to have over 50% in matching money, so I'm asking today for the city commission to be a partner in this project and fund that $4,500. The chamber, like I said, is going to contribute $500, and that would leave the remaining amount for Main Street to be contributing, so that's the gist of it.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Ms. Tracy, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Ma'am, Linda Di Marino first reached out to me the latter of February, was part of March, with two letters, that she said she had met with City Manager Madrid on requesting funding assistance, it was for this, as well as, I believe, their branding project. I did review Mr. Madrid's emails, calendars, met with some other staff, Carol and Tammy, to see if they had any knowledge of his approval, and we didn't, we couldn't find any, anything where he approved it. The letters that she had issued to me looked like they were dated the first of February. At that time, I had let her know that sometimes I couldn't find anything in writing, that it would have to come in front of the commission, because I couldn't just directly approve any of those.
Correct. And I know that I received, because she copied me on those letters to Manager Madrid, and then, of course, I sent them on to him again, and I never heard anything either, so I do know, and I went back and looked at my emails, and I never found anything, because he was always real good at providing whatever he responded with to me, so, and I didn't find anything in my emails, by the way.
So, in response to that, I met with him in person, and Teresa King from the chamber was there, so that's probably, his response, you know, was in person verbally, not writing things. He told me before he left that he would get me a letter stating that the city would be a partner in this project, but I did not receive that.
Thank you, Linda. Are there any questions from the commission?
Madam, I have a couple of comments. Commissioner Luna? I believe that our subrecipient grant item is already over for this year, for over-budget, is that correct, Carol?
Yes, ma'am.
So, while I think it's probably a worthwhile venture to help support our local businesses, I'm a little concerned as to where we're going to come up with that money, just on the fly for that, especially since we've already committed those funds and those dollars, and we're over-budget on that item. And I understand that the deadline for this is March 38th, however, at the moment, unless there's another source that Carol can maybe cite for it, I just have some reservations, and so I was going to ask if Main Street would be able to cover that match in the meantime, and then if we can find the money and the resources because of the tight deadline, if we could then, you know, I hate to say issue an IOU, but tell them, you know, if we can find the money, then we would be willing to partner, but at this time, I want to be able to find the money before we make that comment. That's my personal thought.
In response to that, these types of projects usually do not come out of subrecipient funds, they usually come out of like, I don't know, I think it usually comes out of like a community development area.
But again, Linda, we do have some concerns, because we are a little bit over-budget on some of these funds, as Commissioner Luna pointed out, so as we do not want to say we do not want to partner here, we just need a little bit more time to look for this money so that we can jump on board and partner with you, so we were just hoping that maybe Main Street could come up with the $4,500 and go ahead and pay what was needed, and then we would look and see where we can find the money. Is that what I understand?
That was my thought. And as a businessperson, I would expect to, I currently pay for this kind of service, so as a businessperson, I expect that to be in my, my costs of doing business, so maybe there's some kind of cost share program that Main Street, and I'm sorry if I missed this, Linda, but the people who are receiving these benefits should be able to pay for, I mean, I understand it's a grant, but your e-commerce is a cost of doing business. I don't know that the city of TRC, while we want to support our businesses, should be doing, paying for things, that as a businessperson, you should be expected to pay to be sustainable.
Correct, and I agree with that comment.
Okay, so, really, it's, this is, this is not an uncommon request, we're not paying for them to do e-commerce, what the, what the program is training people to do e-commerce, right? We're not paying for them to have a website, we're not paying for them to, you know, to like do any of the stuff that they're doing, we're training them, and this ultimately will come back and benefit the city, because the more, the more presence that our businesses have online, the more money is going to come into town from out of town, and that is ultimately the best money to have. I mean, we can trade around our dollars all day, but the money that comes into town from out of town is good, number one, and number two, those purchases generate gross receipt tax, which also then goes to, you know, partially to the city coffers. Now, we did, we've done a couple of these kind of trainings in the past where the city was our partner, the customer service training, the city partnered with us for $4,500 on that, and I'm not exactly sure, but I think the Business Development Speaker Series a couple of years ago, where we did various trainings, I think the city partnered with us on that as well.
Madam Mayor, I don't disagree, I completely understand the benefits of gross receipt tax, and I, again, support an initiative, however, I don't know where we're going to get this money, I don't see Carol over there shaking her hand that she has a book full of money for this, and knowing that, not knowing where those kinds of matches come from, I personally am uncomfortable, and I will say to Linda, the one line that kind of conflicts with what you're telling me about the training is the one-on-one consulting to assist with web creation. That's, that's still something a businessperson should be able to contact a company, there are companies who provide that now, there are tutorials on YouTube, there are walking through your, building your website thing, so, I mean, it's not that it can't be done, and I know that lots of our local businesses received our PPP money, which kept them open, but how we spend those monies and our stimulus checks and all of that, if we reinvest that into our businesses, it keeps us sustainable in hard times, so it's, the root of the question was, does Main Street have the extra $4,500 you were asking from the city to meet your required match for this grant, while we, if we tabled this issue today, could go and find that money and then partner with you when we win and if we can find that money?
Yeah, I think that is possible, I may have to, I'm going to have to rework the budget and stuff like that, but yeah, that is possible.
Thank you, that's in agreement, and we appreciate that, so that we have that opportunity to not just not approve this, but to go out and see where we could come up with that $4,500 and be a partner as we would like to be.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we table this item and ask staff to examine funding options and maybe look and see where the money came from those previous partnerships with Main Street, if we weren't using that.
Yes, we can do.
Find out where that money came from and look and see if there's available funds that were previously budgeted that we can use.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Luna and seconded by Commissioner Aragon to table Item I2, Discussion Action Matching Funds, so that we can go back and look and see where we can come up with the $4,500 and see what line item that was paid out of. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Frances Luna?
Yes.
Honorable Senator Whitehead?
Yes.
Honorable Chairman Forrester?
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Redmond Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on, thank you, Ms. Linda. The next item on our agenda this morning is I4, Discussion Action Subrecipient Funding allocations for fiscal year 2021-2022. Tracy Alvarez, our Action City Manager.
Madam Mayor, presentable commissioners. As you know, we're getting into the planning of next year's strategic subrecipient grant application. Deadline for applications was March 5th. All applicants, except one, had all items turned in by the March 5th deadline. So one applicant had their financials turned in. I believe it was approximately 10 days after the deadline, but they did get those submitted, and the allocation requests are in your packet. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you.
I do believe some of the subrecipients are either in audience or online.
I'd like to make also a legal observation, if I might, before you actually look at these individual applications.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin.
Yeah, you know, I just, I understand the documents are entitled subrecipient grant applications, although it's really not really a grant. What we're talking about is an allocation to draw up the, from an entry to a contract. Very important, you look at these applications, if it's a three-page document. And if you look, for example, at bottom page one, if the question asks, state how the residents or business of critical consequence will be benefited by the funding allowed to organizations in fiscal year 2021-2022. And then similarly, when you got page three, there's also a question, state how the residents or business of critical consequence benefited by the funding allowed to organizations per year. So what the point I'm trying to make is, you know, the word grant can be a little misleading because it sounds like the donation, which is not what we're doing there. This is not a violation of the donation clause to approve these. What generally happens is after the commission makes a decision as to what allocations are going to make, there will be a contract drawn up, and the contract will set forth that in exchange for the funds that we are allocating, these services are going to be provided to the city. So it's a contractual relationship where we're getting a benefit in exchange for the money, which is not a grant, that's actually an in-kind consideration. So I just want to make sure it's clear for the record.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin. Are there any questions?
Madam Mayor, I find it a little odd that we would promise funding we don't know that we have because we will be looking at the budget in the coming months. And we could have more money to give, or we may not have all of this money to give. So it is puzzling to me that we would go and approve these before we know what that money is. I personally, and I'm not one for tabling items, as you know, I would rather we wait until we have our budget in front of us, and we are absolutely certain that the contract we are going to be entering into with these, we can uphold our in. And for that, to that point, I mean, there may be additional dollars that, I'm a huge fan of what SJOA does. I would love to be able to fund them to our best capacity. And I know that $50,000 may sound a lot to someone who doesn't understand what they do, but they do so much that $50,000 is nothing to them.
Right.
So I personally, I find reserve, and I would like to table this item and look at these requests and these documents when we examine our budget. And let's see if we can fill the needs when we know what our budget looks like.
I agree.
And I agree with that. And I would like to make a comment too. In looking through this, I did notice, and Tracy did point out that some of the recipient's applications were a little late. Remember that, and this has been kind of one of my pet peeves for the last few years, that there are timelines, there are times, and there are dates that these need to be submitted by. And we want to be able to help everyone, every subrecipient that comes forward and requests money, like Commissioner Luna pointed out with SJOA. They do a fabulous job at what they do, and we would like to fund them to the max of what we can, as we would every other subrecipient. But remember, there are deadlines and there are times that these applications, as well as your reports, once these are finalized and approved, that have to be submitted. And it has been in the past, if it's not done at the time that it needs to be done, then we, commissioners, kind of look at not granting that or not approving that funding, or either penalizing you. So we don't want to penalize, we don't want to not fund. So remember, you need to get your reports and your applications in on time. And that's what I have to say, so thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we table the subrecipient funding allocation decision until we examine our budget and then make that approval during our budget process.
And Commissioner Forster, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Luna and a second by Commissioner Forster to table the subrecipient funding allocations for fiscal year 2021, as noted and mentioned by Commissioner Luna. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Paul Robinson?
Aye.
Honorable Brenda Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is I5, Discussion Action Utility Account Updates. Tracy Alvarez, our Action City Manager.
Madam Mayor, presentable commissioners. Last March, when we first started experiencing some of the effects of COVID, a decision was made to suspend red tagging and disconnection of delinquent utility accounts. I do believe it was reinstated for approximately one month in the month of October, and then suspended again. What you have before you is a printout of some of what's going on in our utility office at this time. And if I can direct you to the first page first. This here is a commercial billing account. You'll see up at the top, it shows the total amount owed on this current bill. It'll tell you the number of bills that have been issued, which was 12, how many numbers of payments they've received, as well as their date of last payment and the date of the previous payment prior to that. The highlighting in green is the payment that has been received on an account, whereas the highlighting in pink is the monthly billing on the accounts. So if you thumb through your stack of paperwork and just even looking at the top of all of these bills, you'll see we have some extremely high, commercial and residential. I did have Sonia pull this information. I was a little shocked to see what we were looking at. And I came across this because that's part of my grant funding request. I do have to pull financial current revenues within our various, you know, water revenues, sewer revenues. And so that's when I noticed that we had quite a drop in our revenues. So what we are requesting is to reinstate our red tagging and disconnection of delinquent accounts. We'd like to begin this in May. That will give customers some time. And while we do understand the hardships that people have had, we do also understand that we've received some stimulus. Some people have received, you know, tax refunds. There's been various funding availability, you know, to be putting payments on some of these accounts. People always have the option to go in and make a payment arrangement with our utility office. Although we do request that those utility arrangements maybe not exceed six months to a year because some of these just can't be paid off. And so Sonia is here with us to answer questions, and we would like to request the commission's support in this.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? I see Commissioner Forster had a question.
My only concern is why are we waiting till May when the stimulus payments, the stimulus checks might be spent by then before they get the warning that their electric's going to be turned off? I would suggest, let's start the ball now and let them know that you use that money for your electric, or it's going to be shut off. That's my opinion.
Sonia and I did speak about that, and we thought that it was only fair to at least give some of our customers out there notification that if they didn't get these delinquents up, they were going to be hit with a $50 red tag fee. And so we were looking at starting it on a billing cycle, which I think the first one in May, to get the ball rolling, would be around the 6th of May.
Yes.
Is there, I mean, do you guys see a problem with going ahead and giving a red tag? I mean, how long, I mean, some of these accounts look like they're almost a year past due.
They are. Whenever we stopped red tagging, unfortunately, we had people who actually just got paid.
Right.
And so, I mean, unless you guys want to change it, I mean, we could start red tagging the first billing cycle in April, which would be, I don't have my calendar, but it's like the first full week in April. And, I mean, it's not like we just red tag and cut them off. I mean, we give quite a bit of notice. So usually, we send out delinquent notices, which we kept doing throughout the COVID just so that people are aware.
Right.
And then...
Sonia, will you please, have tell that, will you explain the length of time from the first bill to, a second bill to?
Okay, so we actually bill someone. If you're a new customer, we'll bill you. And then we wait, and we bill you again. So if we haven't received payment, or at least the payment of your first bill, then we send out a delinquent letter. And then we'll give you like five days to come in or call in and let us know. If we don't hear anything, then we send out a red tag. And at that point, we give another five days. So, I mean, people have...
So...
Forty-five to fifty?
Yeah.
And you have been still sending out these delinquent notices?
We have sent out the delinquent notices because...
Actually, that's plenty of time. Unless it's going to put us out by sending these red tag notices out?
No, we're ready.
But do you...
We're ready.
Yeah, Sonia, couple questions. I talked to Mr. Zigetti the other day, the U A B commission. He's mentioned that it's over $200,000.
That was for cycle eight. That was for one billing cycle.
What is the total that we're owed?
About $700,000.
Okay, so, okay, that's a lot. What percentage of that would be commercial and versus residential, would you say? Yourself, hang on.
I would say probably about 35% commercial, maybe.
And balance, the, okay. Third question. What are the cities doing that are similar to us on this red tagging, you know, due to the pandemic? I'm just curious.
Right. Well, I know that a lot of cities opened back up their red tagging shut-off process in September. And that's why I went to Mr. Madrid. We went ahead and we were approved to start in October. And then they kind of shut it back down in November when the COVID started hitting harder. So we were instructed to stop in November. And at that point, I instructed the girls, the utility office, just to keep sending out delinquents so people were aware of their balances. And then, and as far as I know, most cities started back up in January.
Starting the red tagging.
Yes.
So we're not the Lone Ranger on doing it?
We're not.
Well, we're the Lone Ranger on not doing it.
Well, I mean, I mean of not doing it.
Yeah.
Well, either way, you're...
And I had actually talked to Mr. Madrid about it before he left, that he didn't want to make that decision. But I just feel like the longer we wait, some of these accounts are to the point where, how are they ever going to get caught up?
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Madam Mayor, I'm here that we're not transparent all the time. So $700,000 is crazy. But to kind of just touch on some of these we have, the top two commercial ones. $11,000 owed, 12 bills spent, five payments. The next one, $9,900, so we're just $9 short, of $10,000, 13 bills, 14 payments. That at least tells me that they've been making the payment, they're just behind.
Right.
Then you get down here to $4,000, $4,300 on a residential account, 13 bills, one payment. Then $21,000, 11 bills, four payments. There was another one, $66,000, $66,000, I don't have that one, $66,000, 13 bills, zero payment. I've been making my payments. I've been making our payments. And so fun fact, you know, it's crazy to think, but when your cell phone company wants their payment, it comes time for your cell phone bill to be paid, you pay it because you don't want to live without your phone.
Exactly.
And I think it's completely irresponsible, ridiculous, unacceptable of the residents of our community to expect us to continue to provide them with life's essential utilities, waters, trash, and sewer without making a payment. But by God, we know they've been paying their cell phone bill. But I don't want to wait until May. $700,000, there's our $4,500 for Main Street, there's our subrecipient grant money, there's all kinds of money, and $700,000 of outstanding bills. We hear about how we can't make our infrastructure improvement. We hear about how all of these things, we need to fix our water, we need to take care of our citizens. But if our citizens aren't paying our bills, we can't do any of that.
Correct.
Last time I sat on this commission, Freddie Torres always said, along with Uncle Luminro, we were a utility company that ran a municipality. We cannot run anything without the utility bills being paid. So I will make a motion that we institute the late fees, the red tags, immediately. And I will second that.
I have a motion and a, a motion by Commissioner Luna and a second by Commissioner Forster to implement the $50 and the disconnect immediately. I do want to make one comment, though, before I ask for a roll call. You know, for months now, we've had people that have been disgruntled that come to us and talk about, especially after we implemented and installed the AMIs, about how they were receiving astronomical bills, $700, $900 bills. Well, you know, I have to say that thanks to Sonia looking into, from the utility department, looking into these matters, these people that were actually complaining and fussing and telling us that we were wrong, 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 were people that were delinquent on their own bills. And they hadn't paid for months. But yet they received a huge bill because they hadn't paid for four or five months, and then they come out and jump all over us? That's not fair in itself. Also, they just need to know that with this COVID situation that has hit us for the last year and a little over a year, just because you weren't paying your bill at that time, and we were not, you know, we were giving you leeway on that, didn't mean that you weren't supposed to come in and pay your bill. You know, at some time or another, all of this is going to catch up. And then it's going to be that big bill. I also know that there were some people out there that got very small to no bills at all. Did they ever call and holler at us? Oh, no, because that was in their favor. But the next couple of months, when they received that big bill that took care of that smaller bill and put it all into perspective, then they called and hollered at us. So, you know, in all fairness, please, please, help us. I mean, we're trying to do the best we can for our community, but without you paying your bills, it's not happening. And again, there's our money that we're looking for if we can get you all to come in and at least make a payment arrangement. At least come in and pay something.
And can one person have $14,000 if...
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
And, you know, during the whole COVID thing, a lot of people were working from home. Well, we never did. I mean, we can't work from home. We have to read meters, we have to do billing, we take payments, we can't take payments at home. Everything we did was in the office. So we were always available for payment arrangements or for people to come in and make payments and stuff like that, you know? So we were there. And, I mean, a lot of these people haven't even reached out to us.
Yeah. It looks like you guys have bent over backwards then to have somebody, a residential with 14,000 dollars to have electric.
Mm-hmm.
That's scary. Madam Mayor, before we take a vote, to this $14,000 one, there are some penalty reversals.
Yes, and that was...
How does that happen?
That was, uh, Mr. Madrid approved that.
It was an arrangement, I believe, that Mr. Madrid was trying to make with the customers. And it's my understanding, correct if I'm wrong, this was an account, was an old account from a customer that closed down a business, didn't pay that business bill. And so that business account was transferred to their personal account quite some time ago. And they've been making payments on both their current as well as this past due. But as you can see, the payments haven't come in steadily.
Right, they've said it's only been six payments.
So the delinquent fees were probably at a higher rate because it was an old, closed account. And so the arrangement was made with that customer to reverse some of those delinquent fees in hopes that that payment would then make, or that customer would make those payments.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a real commercial or residential?
It was a commercial and it was transferred to residential.
So my concern with that is, is just quick math and rush. $1,150 of penalties were reversed in anticipation of a payment arrangement after they received a late notice on 10/26. They paid $300 on November 6th and did not make another payment until February 6th.
Yes.
And those two payments were $500 total combined. That is not them keeping up their bargain, their end of the deal. That is somebody taking advantage of the city of TRC. The city commission decided to be accommodating, understanding, and patient during COVID, and it seems as though a lot of people took advantage of that situation. Like Madam Mayor said, they didn't just continue making any payments, they decided to do nothing with it. And I understand there are probably those people who couldn't. But to waive 1100, over $1,100 worth of fees for $500 in payments and we're still owed $14,000, it's time, in my opinion, that we make actual arrangements with these people or we start taking them to court.
I agree.
If they, if we shut their utilities off and they're still not holding up their deal, I want to know what our legal recourse is, Jay.
You're lean.
I, I don't care if it's leaned, I don't care. I, I'm sorry. You're not hurting just the city of TRC, you're hurting your neighbors, you're hurting the police department, you're hurting the library, you're hurting everybody.
I had a thought about that, actually. I think your motion was, Commissioner Luna, was asked to initiate, re-initiate the red tag procedure, is that...
Yes, sir.
You can go a step further, you could actually say that we really want to just enforce all of our existing ordinance, this fourth collection of utility bills.
And I agree with that. I think that we've gotten very lenient. And I feel like, and that's why I brought it up with Acting City Manager Alvarez, is that I feel like we shouldn't make any arrangements that go past six months or a year. Because some of these accounts, you guys can look at them, and if they pay their current bill plus $25, they're never going to pay that off.
Exactly right.
They're never going to pay that off. So I feel like we should be stricter. And we're not asking anybody to pay for something they haven't already used.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, this is power that they've used, water that they've used, sewage that they've used.
I think, yeah.
So...
Well, I will withdraw my second. So I withdraw that original motion and make the motion...
Let me ask a question real quick. Sonia, when, when these people set up payment arrangements, they're still penalized, they're still given the late fee, right?
Yes.
Each and every month?
Yes.
So that doesn't go away?
It will not go away.
So people need to understand that you need to pay, or at least try to pay, your current bill and a small amount on your delinquent in order to at least try to get caught up because you are assessed that late fee each and every month that bill is late.
Right. And then, I mean, in some cases, the penalties are only like a dollar, $2.
Right.
You know, I, I really stand strong that we shouldn't go past six months to a year for payment arrangements, that people need to pay off their arrears balance in that amount of time.
Okay.
And I'd like to follow up on that. Not only the length of time, but we need to be strict with the payment arrangements. We can make payment arrangements, but I know Sonia will attest to the fact that somebody will make a payment arrangement and then they've got to come in and they can't meet that payment arrangement and they want to make another arrangement on top of that. We just need to start enforcing something.
And I know it's in city ordinance that, you know, I believe it's only three payment arrangements that we're supposed to allow a customer. And I think we should fall back to that because of course, through previous management, that has kind of slipped through the cracks also. But I feel, again, that we need to just be a little more strict.
Well, like you said, this is paying, they're paying for what they're getting, they're not, I mean, we're not asking them to pay anything that they're not already using.
No, I mean, don't...
They need to be more conscious of what they're doing. If they can't pay the bill, turn off the dang TV.
If you look at the ordinance, they already have, you know, good procedures for us.
We do.
The three, one of the three payments, the, you know, the red tags, the liens that you can impose, penalties and that sort of thing. So that's why I think that's a simple motion to strictly enforce our existing ordinance to collect these overdue utility bills.
Right.
That's what I'm thinking.
That is my motion.
Okay. Question. Be in the, oh, the other question. If someone just jumps ship and skips out, doesn't pay, Jay, if I'm not mistaken, there's a lien put on the property, correct?
That's one running.
I mean, we go to court. But I think it's the lien situation, correct?
That's one.
That's one, that's one option we have, yes.
Okay. I just, they need to know that, or probably they do know that, just now.
Yeah, well, putting the liens on the properties and, see, we have a lot of properties where there's 12 renters that have lived there. But the, a different person owns the property because they're renting to these people. And those 12 people still owe us money.
So if they owe $10,000, skip out, jump ship, whatever, and that property, if it gets sold, we get $10,000.
Right.
Unless it's a rental.
You have to start holding those property owners accountable for their own renters.
Yes.
The owners need, the landlords need to start going after their...
So, I mean, they, there's ways, I, I...
There is consequences for that.
There hasn't been in the past. In the past, what has happened is a landlord will rent out their unit.
Mm-hmm.
That tenant may skip out and there's an owing balance. A landlord would come in and they would certify that that person no longer lives there, they're moving in a new tenant, and a new tenant moves in. So we do have some very old accounts where that property is associated with a large delinquent or old debt. And what we want to have is the property owner to be responsible, to go after their tenants themselves. We don't open a new account at that property until any debts associated with that property are paid. And then the landlords will have to go after their tenants for those.
So, Madam Mayor, Jay, is that something we already have in ordinance? Do we need to restructure, or do we need to do that as an ordinance? That we don't, so I have a rental, they move out, they didn't pay, my next renter can't get utilities to do that until I pay that bill and now I'm responsible? Do we have that in our ordinance or do we need to create a new ordinance for that policy?
I think that's a policy.
As a landlord, landlord, whatever, I'm talking, um, as a landlord, I think we need to work with our property owners because there are some who own quite a few properties that that is going to become a concern. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't take care of that, but I don't want to blindside them because of their tenants.
Right.
So, you know, maybe they need to do what Amanda does, is Commissioner Forester is keep that and they charge them, I don't know. But it's ordinance or no, is that covered?
I, um, do you know, I don't know for sure.
It's not in an ordinance, it's just an internal policy, the way it was previously handled. I think the ordinance, I'd have to, I'd have to pull the information for sure, but I think the ordinance itself talks about a lien on the property for the utility bills, but it doesn't necessarily differentiate that between renters, tenants, and landlords.
And my thing is...
You don't have to make that part of the...
If we get a little stricter with people not owing us so much money, the security deposits on the account are for that last bill that they may skip out on. But when they owe, you know, $1,000 and their security deposit was 200, I mean...
Well, and as a landlord, I do, I mean, I charge a deposit on that and I keep, for my safety, I keep those in my name and they pay me every month and so that I can manage, make sure I'm managing that as well.
And for any landlords out there, I mean, we do have the capability to send a landlord bill of their, for their renter, you know? So it goes to their renter and their landlord too. So then the landlord is aware of what their tenants are and aren't doing.
And what's that word regarding, you know, what a lien is? The public document. It's recorded via county clerk's office. So if you have a lien on my property, I'm not going to be able to dispose my property until the lien's addressed or unless the department's bought my property subject to the lien. So that's out there.
May I, one last thing?
Go ahead.
Whoever likes the motion, I think we need to add in there that effective the implementation of this red tagging, that every 90 days, Sonia, someone gives a little brief update so we know where we're going.
That's fine.
And we've kind of already implemented that she would, they would come in, department has determined any of us. So, yeah, that's perfect. So there is a table, there is a motion on the table.
And Commissioner Forester, second the motion.
Do you have the wording of that motion? Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Luna and a second by Commissioner Forester to proceed forward with the red tagging and the placing of liens if need be and all that was discussed here by Attorney Rubin and Commissioner Luna. Madam Clerk, would you please co-roll?
Honorable Sandra, or Honorable Amanda Forester?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Linnan?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries and that was on item number I-5.
And Madam Mayor, I don't think we want to seem like we're cold and callous. But as Commissioners, it is our job to be, to watch the budget and be physically responsible for the residents of our community. And we can't do that when we have over $700,000 in outstanding utility bills.
Very well said, Ken.
I agree, yeah. I don't think we're being cold and callous. I think they've been more than lenient. I mean, but there's going to be the little Mrs. Jones out there who hasn't paid and unfortunately, she's going to owe $300 and she's getting her social security from her late husband or something, and she's going to be the first one who gets the red tags, not the person who owes 14,000 or 11,000 or 6,000 and hasn't made a payment in 12 years or made two, I mean, 12 months, made two payments in 12 months. It's going to be little Mrs. Jones who's doing her best to make it work. She's going to be the one who calls. And I'm sorry to little Miss Jones, one bad apple spoils the barrel and she will understand that, I hope, with, you know, we have to hold her in check. We have to be physically responsible. That is our job, that is why we're out there. So I'm sorry to little Miss Jones.
And I just want to thank you guys for your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia.
The next item on our agenda is I-6, discussion action, expenditure, revenue, cash, and transfer reports for February 2021. Ms. Kirkpatrick, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Actually, this is just an update, it doesn't require action. Hopefully you had a chance to read through the reports. My goal is to report to you monthly where we are with budget, where we are with revenue. Right now, I'm looking at our utilities, of course, and I do want to mention, we plan on people paying their bills to budget what we have planned. So if everybody paid their bill, we wouldn't have quite a windfall of money extra. It's we already planning on them paying their bill to meet some of these obligations. I have tried to make notes anywhere that there's something anomaly standing out. I know in some of our budgets, I mentioned to you yesterday that we pay for capital improvements upfront and pending reimbursement. So that's always a cycle that we're staying on top of. We're trying to put that into a capital account so we don't have to use our general fund revenues, but that has been the history, how we've done that. Most of our utilities right now are at 30% remaining, so they're, they're pretty much on target for what we budgeted. Our gross receipts are at 50% or less, that was ended February. So I don't see a reason why we wouldn't collect the rest of our gross receipts for the year. But I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you for the update. Okay, the next, the next item on our agenda is item J, reports. J-1, Assistant City Manager, do you have a report?
Not at this time.
Thank you. J-2, Attorney Rubin?
I have no report, thank you.
No report at this time. All right, let's start with me. And I have no report today. So Commissioner Forester, do you have a report today?
I do not have a report today.
Commissioner Baca?
I do not, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Luna?
I do. Oh, imagine. Gosh, we were going.
I know, I know, Mary.
Get the paper out.
So I want to brag on the city staff. At the last commission meeting, the commission authorized staff to begin work on Fiesta, and I have attended two department head meetings, and I have never been more proud. And the first meeting, I actually got goosebumps. Everybody was so excited and there were ideas flowing and everybody was on board. And so Fiesta 2021 is going to happen. At the last staff department head meeting, the department heads agreed and wanted the blessing of the commission that the theme be Homecoming to celebrate the class of 2021 and that the kids have had a cruddy year. Unlike the class of 2020 who got to go to school for three quarters of a year, the class of 2021 will not, they will get to go to school for about four or five weeks when it all is done. And so it was actually Deputy Chief Baker's suggestion and idea, and everyone loved it and was behind it. So with the blessing of this commission, the theme would be Homecoming. And the class of 2021 would be the grand marshal. So I'm going to work with the school once I get a nod, not an official vote, but a nod of support from everybody. I will get with the schools and work on having the senior class be at the beginning of the parade in some form, fashion, flatbed trailer-like event. And then it was also Deputy Chief Baker's idea to try to get the rest of the classes throughout the parade. We have staff members who are involved in civic organizations, they want parade floats. So Angela's department is ready to go with the vendor forms and the parade form. I met with OJ this morning. We went over the schedule, which I handed you out, a very tentative schedule. There's a couple of things missing that I will finalize by the end of the day, and then that will be ready for public consumption and release. But Fiesta 2021 is going to happen. It is an all-outdoor event. It will be in downtown TRC between City Hall and Bank of the Southwest. Former Commissioner Ross Heschler steps up to the plate and he is going to be handling the vendors. Eric Downs will be organizing all the music events. Buddy Montoya will be handling the parade organizations. Elise Addy is on board. She said, put me in coach wherever you need me. I'm there. Commissioner Baca will be organizing the fishing derby. We have Clay Sears doing the jump boat races, F.A., doing the volleyball tournament. I mean, everybody has just stepped up and so it's very exciting, it's going to happen. It takes a village and I think, you know, I just appreciate the staff and I want to brag on them and how much, you know, they, every, the last two meetings, they've been like all in, coming with ideas and their comments and, and it's just, it's awesome to see how much support there is for something that is who we are. And so I wanted to brag on them, but also update you guys on where we are with Fiesta.
Thank you.
It's exciting.
Yes, it is.
Oh, and Commissioner Forester did do a little part, so she won't be here, throw that out there. I did a lot. Just you. Go ahead. Sorry, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Aragon, do you have a report?
No.
No report at this time. All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is item K, executive session. We have one item, K-1, limited personnel matter, City Manager, pursuant to 10/15/1, H-2. At this time, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Don't move. Seconded.
I have a motion by Commissioner Luna and seconded by Commissioner Forester to go